To each and everyone of you, being the first Tuesday of the month, welcome to the City of Daly City Virtual Planning Commission of June 1st, 2021. The current virtual planning commission meeting format has been undertaken by the City of Daly City in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The Planning Commission thanks the public for its participation in the virtual meeting format. It is our intention that the commission receive any and all comments that you may wish to make for the proposals being undertaken tonight. If you would like to comment, please register to do so at the website address that is on the screen. Thank you. Pledge to the flag.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Gary. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Crum, uh, Pacheco?
Present.
Uh, Proanio?
Present.
Uh, Villanueva's, and Satori?
Present. Okay, approve of the previous meeting made for for the virtual planning commission minutes. Any motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes, the previous meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved a second day that we approved the previous minutes of the meeting made for. Any comment? There's without any comment, so. Say aye to those.
Aye.
Okay, so no opposition. It's been approved that we take this as an approved minutes. Okay, we go now to the public hearings or use permit. UPR dash five dash twenty-one, one five zero thirty-one to convert an existing vacant commercial space at sixty-five hundred Mission Street to a tattoo studio. This will be conducted by planning staff, Mr. Brian Talan, Assistant Planner.
Good evening, commissioners. Let me turn on my share screen so I can share the presentation with you. Okay, are you able to see the presentation?
Yes.
All right, so the first item before you this evening is the use permit for the Tattooed Goat Society. It's a tattoo studio that will be located at sixty-five hundred Mission Street. And the applicant is proposing to use the existing building as a tattoo studio. The ground floor of the building was most recently occupied by an automotive electronics retail store. There's a note I want to make and a correction to the staff report that you received. The previous use was not a nail salon, but instead was a retail store. Additionally, no tenant improvements are proposed. The project is located on the southwest corner of Theta Avenue and Mission Street. And here is the proposed floor plan. The proposed facility would provide up to four tattoo stations and operate seven days a week from ten AM to eight PM. The business would include approximately five hundred square feet of retail and waiting area at the front of the storefront. And the room located at the rear of the tenant space includes the tattoo booths and a conference area. And together that equals about five hundred square feet. Again, there are no modifications proposed to the building or additional floor area proposed. Staff has reviewed the application for CEQA compliance and finds that it is categorically exempt per section fifteen three oh one. Staff finds that the proposed use is compatible with the general plan and the zoning regulations of the light commercial district. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward use permit UPR five twenty-one fifteen zero one five to the city council for approval. If you have any additional questions, I'm available to.
Pardon me, I do through the chair, I have a few questions. Number one, do you have any photos of the actual, so I could kind of, because I know where you're talking, it's kind of towards top of the hill.
Yeah, it's one, sorry, it's one block south of top of the hill where John Daly and Mission meet. Um, I I'm not sure, maybe Mike can help me. I can't pull up the photos of the property from my laptop here, but they are saved in the electronic folder. Is there a way for us to pull up the site photos that are saved in the folder?
I'm gonna share screen just a second.
Okay, thank you.
As Michael's doing that, okay, there we go.
Yeah, so this is the property.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I think there was a auto sound installation business here for a number of years.
Was it? It was, or did they sell washers and dryers?
You have that place.
It looked like it was auto stereos and alarm systems is what I was able to find out.
Okay.
You know, years ago? Years ago, that was a flower shop.
Ah, that makes sense. That makes sense. So what's, I'm sorry, what's north and, I mean, sorry, yeah, south of it? What's next door? Okay, so there's the Greek store, I got it.
Yeah.
So they're gonna take that whole corner, all that rust next to the right of the Greek store?
Correct.
That whole spot that's five hundred square feet, does it, it looks bigger than it?
Actually, I think they're taking the tenant space that currently has the bars on the windows. I don't believe it includes the tenant space in between.
Okay, so that other one in between, was that the place that sold car refrigerators and, no, maybe I'm in the wrong.
CG appliance, Teresa.
Ah, that's what I was.
CG is up here.
Way at the top.
Got a block up.
Yeah.
With Pacific Restaurant. Right, okay, so, um, okay, there it is. Thank you. See, I thought I was losing my mind.
Yeah, this kind of gives an idea. Here's the building. Across the street to the north is the Goodyear Tire Center.
Yeah.
We have eighty-eight Hillside to the east.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a residential neighborhood down Theta.
Down below, yeah.
We haven't received any comments from the.
Yeah, it's always better to be occupied than unoccupied.
Yeah.
Interesting, okay. Thank you, it gives me a better idea where we're at. Thank you.
Okay, are there any more question before we make this a public, public hearing? Gary, any question?
No questions at all.
How about you, Teresa?
Just wanted to get an idea where it was at, see if it's gonna impact the area. Are there any other tattoo local down near there? I know there's one on Washington Street, but I can't recall if we have any other tattoo locations nearby?
I'll tell you more.
Okay.
Okay, so we are now going to open this for public hearing. Anybody who wants to, do we have any letters or any comment from the public, they don't?
We don't have any comments from the public that I can see.
Okay, so we made this close this to, any motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second motion? Okay.
Second.
It's been moved a second day that we close this public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, are you, are you okay with that, Teresa? I think you're muted.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Adopt the findings as outlined herein. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Do we accept it?
It's been moved a second day that we adopt this finding. Permit the environmental assessment. Any motion?
Here.
It's been moved.
It's not like Gary do it.
Seconded.
First, second.
Oh, I can't.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, affirm in environmental assessment has been approved. Recommend that the Planning Commission forward to the city council following recommendation to approve the use permit UPR dash five dash twenty-one, one five zero thirty-one subject to the conditions of approval herein. Stated, roll call, please.
Uh, Pacheco?
Aye.
Proanio?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes, okay, thank you very much, Mr. Andrew Bryan.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number two, zone change. Z, Z, dashboard twenty-one, that's one five zero zero eight to disown the entire parcel at sixteen eighteen Sullivan Avenue to be included within the CC Commercial Cannabis Combining District. The disowning would permit the retail sale of cannabis by right without the requirements for additional public hearings. This will be conducted by the planning manager, Michael. Take it away, Mr. Michael.
Thank you, Chair Satori, members of the Planning Commission. This is a request by Dan Tialdi, who is present in tonight's meeting to amend the zoning that exists at sixteen eighteen Sullivan Avenue to include the property in the Commercial Cannabis Combining District. So the base zoning would remain, and then this would be added, let's call it combining district, which would allow the retail sale of cannabis products. As the Planning Commission may recall, back in February and March, just the past February and March, the city council, the Planning Commission and city council approved amendments to the zoning map to include a number of properties throughout the city in the combining district, Commercial Cannabis Combining District. This property was not included. And Mr. Tialdi indicated that he would have liked to have been included, and so we indicated to him that he needed to actually make an application to rezone the property, and that's what he's done. So that's kind of the background on where, how this came to be before you. The property is a multi-tenant building located at sixteen eighteen Sullivan Avenue, which is generally southwest of the intersection of Sullivan Avenue and Washington Street. The applicants proposed to rezone the entire parcel again to the CC Combining District. The current zoning is presently a commercial retail office. And it's in the Sullivan corridor specific plan, and it would be rezoned to CRO dash CC with the combining district label attached. The existing building is approximately ninety-six hundred square feet. Some of you may be familiar with it. There's a Mexican restaurant, Mailbox USA, nail salon. There's a dermatology business upstairs, as well as a dental business, and a farmer's insurance on the ground floor. The applicants indicated that the, that there is a cannabis retailer that's expressed interest in a two thousand square foot space on the building's second floor. Although the planning commission should note that if the rezoning was approved, the applicant could place their cannabis retailer in any of the tenant spaces, should they become vacant. And should the proposal meet all of the city's other regulations, which are, which require that there's only one cannabis business within the within this area. There's, well, we'll go over that in a second. This is a site photo, the again, this is the two-story building, and some of the uses I indicated are here. The property does not include the Speedy Louvre business that's located to the north. So items for consideration, the initial establishment of the commercial cannabis overlay excluded properties that were within six hundred feet of any school or youth center. So this property, and there's an attachment to the staff report that shows this graphically is not within six hundred feet of any school or youth center. MP Brown Elementary School, located generally to the southwest of the project site, is just beyond the six hundred foot boundary, and that's again, as shown in an attachment to the staff report. In consideration of the request, there are no residences adjacent to the property. The nearest residential use exists across Washington Street, and it makes use apartment building that's situated to the northwest of Washington and Sullivan avenues. The property is situated in an area generally occupied by retail and office and automotive service uses. So it kind of sits in an area that really would have no impact to any residential uses, as far as we can see. We did consult with the police department on this item, and the police department had no objection to the proposed rezoning. So we took some snapshots from street view, the adjacent uses. Subject buildings located to the left of the frame. This is the Speedy Louvre, that's to the north of the building. And to the south of it, so this is just opposite view, the subject buildings on the right-hand side of the frame. This is part of the AT&amp;T Office Corporation Yard that exists off of Sullivan Avenue. There is, I believe, I don't know if this is DWR City Facility or SFPC, but it's essentially a pumping station for water. That's to the east, and then two eighty, of course, is on the other side of this. To the northeast of the building is an ARCO gasoline station. And to the west is, again, there's this AT&amp;T office building, and there's a corporation yard behind it that wraps around the building to the south. And the reason that we're showing you these photos is just to illustrate that, again, the property is situated with none, in an area of non-residential uses, and generally, the project would have no impact to residential. There is a residential mixed-use building that's located on the other side of the Speedy Louvre building, again, at the northwest corner of Sullivan Avenue and Washington Avenue. The proposal is exempt from CEQA. And the staff is recommending that the planning commission forward to the city council a recommendation to approve the requested zone change. If there's any questions, we can answer those for you. We've received no written communication from the public. We sent out three hundred-foot notice on this to all property owners, and we've received no written comment.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Michael. Before we open this to the public hearing, any quick comment from Gary and Teresa about this? You have any?
Thank you, Ray, and through the chair, then. It is, when we discussed locations for cannabis, we did speak about not being too close to schools, and I'm not, I mean, I know it's a little, it's not that far by car, even walking from Holy Angel School, and you're saying also M Brown, up the street, MP Brown, right?
Right.
And even though you're saying it's barely the six hundred feet, I mean, six hundred feet is, I mean, that's not that far away.
You know, that was the standard for locating.
Right, correct. So we had a detail, we had a long discussion. I'm curious to hear what both Gary and Mr. Satori says, our chair says about that, because that's the concern we had previously in discussing where we would recommend. So I'd like to see what they say.
I put the attachment on the screen of the MP Brown six hundred-foot buffer.
Thank you.
Any more comment? Gary, do you have any comment? Anyway, if you don't have any comment, I have some few questions, Mike. Okay, how many have applied already for this cannabis site in Daly City? Is this the only one?
How many applications have we received?
Yeah.
We received no formal applications for, or have we?
To clarify, you mean applications for cannabis businesses themselves?
Yes, in general.
Right, we have not opened up the application process yet. We're expecting to do that sometime in June or July.
Okay, because I understand that we have newly created commission called Small Business Commission. If they're really into this kind of lowering investment investors to the city, this should be the main job of the Small Business Commission. It's situated, I'm just speaking aloud, because Daly City really needs revenues. And I was just reading into the Wall Street Investment Guide that made this kind of business, so think of the picture, even Richard Bronson, or one of the billionaires putting up this kind of investment. That's why I'm asking this, because you have now in a lot of San Francisco, like in Pacifica, and then in Daly City. We are a little bit slow in terms to to the business head hunters to put up some business here. This is already an opportunity for us, you know. Anyway, this is legal. And how much do you think to put up this kind of, just like in this, you have shown us, Michael, how much do you think is an investment for this? Just all by figure?
Oh, to do a T, to get up and running, I honestly don't know.
Several hundred thousands of dollars, yeah.
You're thinking two hundred?
It's north of that, yeah.
Because I understand that even in some places, it could be half a million, something like that. It depends on how you market your things, because to me, this could be a good revenue source for the incoming years, because this is it. Thirty-three states have already signified their aggressiveness to this, and in some states, they have criminalized, the so-called hard drugs, so I I'm not impressed. As a businessman, I would like to say also that we should encourage putting up business. We have here, San Francisco is very near with us, yeah. It can, if, as a businessman, I would say that if we can put at least five or up to ten stores here, at least it can generate a lot of millions also of revenues to the city.
Through the chair, I had a couple of questions. Number one, if you could refresh our memory, how many, what's our limit in Daly City? Is there a limit of stores?
Thank you for asking, because I did gloss over that in the presentation. So there's, there's basically, as the city council adopted the the combining district back in March, there was a proposal for a number of what we call eligibility zones throughout the city. And the city council, in a nutshell, nexted everything that was east of Interstate two eighty. So there was one in the Bay Shore, and there were several in the original Daly City part of the city on Hillside Boulevard, and those were taken out. So we were left with the ones that are shown on the screen. There are essentially six. And the eligibility zone that this particular property would annex, so to speak, into is number one, Sullivan corridor area, which is essentially everything in between University of Sarah and Sullivan in the brown, the brown parcels. Subject parcel is where my, I can't zoom in anymore, but is where my mouse is hovering over, southwest corner generally of Washington and Sullivan.
Michael, may I, I just, I'd like to confirm what I'm hearing. What I'm understanding is within the zone where this building is located, there is an opportunity for one
For one.
location to be placed.
That's right.
Before that, although this person is interested in this location, this person, as well as any other applicants, would have to apply through the city so that they you know, follow all the guidelines, the city of Daly City, San Mateo County, in having a cannabis store, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
And the last meeting, we did see some stores, one in particular in Pacifica, that looked just like a nice little boutique. So it's nicely kept and such, and again, everybody follows the regulations. We're not that far from the police station, you know, so, you know, it's, and the police, you're saying, I saw in your presentation, police are saying they have no objection.
They have no objection, no.
Very good.
And to succinctly answer your question, there's a possibility for six retail cannabis stores in Daly City presently.
Total.
That's good.
Total, yes.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes, correct. Okay, I think that helps clarify.
The one that you have just mentioned is, it's a good location, actually. It should be accessible also to the public, wherein they can easily buy or get this for their any medicinal value, just like a CBS or Walgreens, something like that. So any more question? Before we go into the public hearing? Okay, now we open the public hearing. Are there any letters or any comments from the public about this?
There are no letters or comments that I have.
Okay. Anyway, we're just here not to propagate the cannabis, we're just here to implement the law that has been approved ready. And we're just trying to figure out the locations here, which, you know, it's very important that we inform the people that this is coming, so. Okay, so the meeting for public hearings is open now. If there is no public people who would like to talk, so we might as well close this. Any motion to close this? If you have any comment?
No.
Okay, somebody has to. Motion to close? Teresa, you have, okay, it's been moved a second. Okay, do you have any comment, Teresa? You are muted.
Okay.
Any more comment before we close it?
No, no more comment. I'd like to make a motion to close.
Okay, it's been moved a second day that we closed this hearing, public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
This will be a fast meeting today. Okay, it's been moved a second day that we closed the public hearing, recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council following recommendation. Adopt the findings as outlined herein. Any motion?
I'll make a motion to accept it as outlined.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved a second day that we adopt the findings as outlined herein. Any motion? Adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt the findings.
Been moved second then, by Gary?
A second, second.
We adopt the findings as outlined herein. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
It's been moved a second day that we have this as adopted. Adopted, recommend that the city council approve the environmental assessment, any motion? It's been moved and seconded.
Second.
That we affirm the environmental assessment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You know, this is just a, the procedure really, but actually, recommend that the city council approve zone change ZZ thus four thus twenty-one. One five zero zero eight, subject to the conditions of approval outlined here in. Any motion?
Second.
Okay, the roll call, please.
Uh, Pacheco?
Aye.
Roanu?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes, when is this going to the city council? Get, Michael.
Um, we'll have to set time and place, uh. Probably, is is there a, there's a second meeting in July, too?
Uh, yeah, we have both meetings.
So at least we can inform the people who wants to to know.
Let me get the exact date, hold on one second.
Okay, okay, uh. Before we close, any 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 uh. Message or any? Comment that you would like to address anybody, Teresa, Gary, and everybody?
If you don't mind, uh, through the chair, many of you know Gary's uh dad passed away. And uh I wonder, yeah, I wonder if we could, you know, end our meeting today in his honor.
Dedicate this to, to the father of Gary, uh, we dedicate this uh. Meeting in honor of the father of Gary Pacheco. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Uh, any message, Gary?
No, I just want to say thank you for that, that that was uh. It's very touching, thank you, I appreciate every single one of you, and yeah, thank you for all your support, thank.
If we can send a some sort of uh letter to to them, get they do, is that okay? Okay, thank you, eh, okay, um. Anything else you would like to comment?
Everybody's looking pretty good.
Well, uh, I just spoke with the. Uh, DJ Kanipa, and she said that June fifteen at Nebbin Hall. Uh, there'll be a some sort of celebration for normalization process i- in. California, so you are all invited, she said, food is available, so June fifteen. Nebbin Hall, uh, so you're all invited by by the supervisor of the of district. So with this, I would like to say uh, thank you, and.
Thanks.
Have the. Normalization process going on, thank you, and have a good night.
Alright.
Good night, everybody.
Everyone.
Thank you, see you later.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.